And good morning. It is twenty minutes after seven o'clock and joining us in studio this morning, Mayor Protem, City Council, representing Ward Two, all of these things are still true. Jason Perry joining us here this morning. Morning, sir. How you doing today?
Well, it's beginning to look a lot like Christmas.
It is in March.
You know, have you ever with your kids or with with young and say, you know, when I was a kid, we used to have this, we used to, you know, I'm trying to teach my my kids, they all say they're Southerners. We're all from Tennessee and they all say they're Southerners. I started doing this thing called a Southern Grub where on Facebook.
I've seen some of those.
If you're if you're really Southern, you're gonna eat like a Southern. You're gonna eat boiled peanuts and and different.
I remember, I think the one I saw was your boiled peanuts.
Boiled peanuts, pickled eggs, all the good stuff.
Did you do one on greens one time?
Oh, yeah.
I think I remember one about collard greens.
Mustard greens. Yeah. And so they all claim they're Southern, but I joke with them every once in a while, saying, you know, when I was like, you know, we know, we always say, you know, when I was a kid, we had this that I tell them because they don't really know a lot about. When I was a kid, we had this thing called Spring, you know, and it was the same between winter and summer.
It was a transition type period.
We don't have that here.
We do. It's just like a day long.
Yeah, I was gonna say forty-eight hours. Enjoy.
Well, it hasn't happened yet because that day that it comes is the day the trees turn green and then the next day it's summer.
Exactly.
Well, for folks that aren't aware, last night, the Roswell City Council met and we yesterday, Jason and I kind of previewed it and a lot of it was a lot of roadwork stuff, a lot of and a lot of, you know, changing an ordinance here to allow this to happen. So last night is one of those that although it wasn't like the controversial sexy issues, it was all kind of the minutia of running government that needs to be done.
We had one or two of those issues come up that I wouldn't expect necessarily to be those kind of issues, but for the most of it, it was those things that you do to maintain, you know, your neighbors don't see it every day when you're you 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 put that new roof on your house or you paint your house or you have the plumber over or you have somebody cleaning the carpets. They don't see it.
Right.
But but you you know what's going on.
Absolutely.
And so I'd have those things done.
And people won't care until they turn on their old their their flusher toilet, turn on their spigot and it doesn't do what it's supposed to. And then then they care all of a sudden.
And yes.
Which understandable.
You know, we used to, we lived in Jimenez, Chihuahua, Mexico for for a number of years and and then that literally was the way it was. And in Jimenez, there were times where there was no power. And when there was no power in Jimenez, there was no water because you had to get, there wasn't pressure in the water.
And the pumps were electric.
So you had to have a pump to get it up on top of your roof and then and then gravity fed the other water into the house. So you learn real quick to be thankful for flushing toilets and.
Absolutely. Yeah. Your perspective changes a little bit on those things.
Yes, sir.
So last night was a lot of making sure that those kinds of things keep working forever.
It was. We started the meeting last night and I just want to say this because most kids are getting ready for school right now. If any of you are listening, they to show that they can do it. Don Trailmore was with us last night.
Don Trailmore, yeah.
Are a hometown hero, if you would say.
And if I remember right, he's he's like one of the voices for the Lobo football team.
He just does everything. I don't know. He really was an amazing person to meet. And as we were going through, as I was reading the proclamation last night, I'll be honest with you, I'm not a sports guy. I think you can look at me and know I'm not a sports guy. I'm more of a, you know, an eating guy, you know.
I'm all about eating. I'm on team eating too.
But this guy has just done everything. He has made has so many records with with U N M and oh, man, it was just unbelievable. So we had a proclamation from last night and the Chief of Police, Chief Smith was very gracious to send some officers down. His his mother, Angela, lives down at the base area and she's one of City Council.
Yes, she is.
And and so they sent some officers down and gave a police escort.
Oh, how nice.
From the house up to the convention.
Make sure mom got here safely and took care of so we can be a part of her son's proclamation.
And just the most impressive thing for me was as we were honoring him and talked about the great accomplishments that he has 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 achieved. The whole time, he just wanted to talk about how blessed he was to have a godly mother and how blessed he was to have a heavenly father who's who's protected him. And you know, that humble humbleness is not something you know a whole lot of anymore.
Sure. And I'm sure mom was just sitting there proud just of her son, you know, just just saying, you know, and by the way, you did a good job, mom. Look, look, look what happened there. That's awesome.
But what a blessing. And then and then one of the pastors from here in in town that had part of his life and his wife came up and 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 just shared, you know, about that godly heritage that he had. And it just a really you know, for for last council meeting, as as the council's about to turn to another council, it was good to just take a moment and not have those nervous jitters about we gotta vote on this and we gotta argue about that. And just say, you know what? Let's just take a moment. Let's just unite and let's just recognize the accomplishments of someone in Roswell.
And I think it also reminds us of why everybody's up there doing it because when you look at those stories and you look of that at the other day, that's all we're trying to do is create lives where all of our Roswell, Roswellians, New Mexicans can achieve those kinds of things and deliver the kind of things that they want to do. So so I think hopefully, you know, the city council is sitting there, you know, say, hey, they're about to debate things, but look and say, we gotta remember, this is why.
This is what it's about.
This is why we're here doing what we're doing.
This young man grew up here and because other counselors in the past cared enough to 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 make things work and function in the city. We had a young man who was able to live here and and the teachers, the educators, they were all part of his life and it was just a great time. So that's how we that's how we started things off last night and then we moved on down through them through the agenda and got into the really exciting.
The deep on your edge of your seat type deals.
I think I shared with you yesterday that we were going to be holding the public hearing to adopt the ordinance which changes the the railroad district to allow for parking to be done differently for those kinds of things. And that that went very well. I think I think we recognize that if we you can't expect growth in certain areas if you don't recognize that there some things are not, it's not, it's not a, everything's not cookie cutter.
Sure.
It's not cookie cutter. You know, you can't have the Walmart parking lot in the middle of downtown.
Right.
For the merchants. It's not feasible. It's not gonna work. So we got through that and then we got into the all the projects and and it was a lot of money that we dealt with last night, but it's it's for great reasons. We've got that water line expansion that is going across the the airport over to the other side. And what that's going to allow for is future development if future council decides to try to expand and putting infrastructure down the 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 east side or even the southeast side as some would would like to see happen. That that project is started. We'll have that water line that's going to go over there to an existing property that has existing tenants right now that's going to help to ensure they're not going to have those water problems. But then also it's going to help the county because there are actually residents just on the other side of was that wild cross.
Yeah, it gets a little, the county, city jurisdictions get a little little crossed sometimes over there.
But over there, there are some county folks that are on that are not on city water, they're on well water. And eventually they may have trouble, you know, that's that's a base. It was, you know, we don't know everything that's out there.
Sure.
So this is going to ensure that there is there. So actually residents are going to benefit from that as well to be able to ensure.
So if their wells dry up and everything, now they know you're not, you don't have to dig a new well.
To pop onto.
You can get off the city water, which, you know, depending when, hopefully that never happens too. But if it does, that now you get to at least balance the cost difference that is more beneficial for you to dig a new well or to be able to pop on to the city system.
And will help with, you know, fire hydrants, that kind of stuff that just going to be beneficial. It's a
Emergency services giving them more resources in that area.
All all of those things. So.
Yeah. And that's and and here's the thing we, you know, we always talk about, I think we as a community want growth and every one of the most exciting when we talk cities, when people hear about new businesses or new entities coming to Roswell, that's always the scuttlebutt fun talk that everybody loves and because you always want to see new things and have new opportunities in your community. But all before that kind of stuff happens, the city has to make sure the infrastructure is there to do it.
None of it works there again if the toilet doesn't flush.
Exactly. So some of the work we're talking about here is to allow those kinds of things to happen, whatever, you know, so in twenty years, they decide, you know, we're gonna put a major hub of something down here. Now they're locked in and ready to do.
And there is there is that philosophical difference that I think that we're going to have to wait till the next council gets on to sort of get get our pulse, our finger on the pulse to see which way we're going because though we need that infrastructure, though the master plan shows, yes, infrastructure down through here for for future development could be good. There's also the thing that we have to recognize is we have current infrastructure that needs to be replaced as well.
Sure.
We have current tenants right now in buildings and we have areas that that need to be rehabbed and refurbished on this side as well. So so we've got a.
But I'm guessing too, you're also weighing like, okay, when we gotta rehab these, do we need to upgrade it to something to handle bigger volume because we anticipate so? So when you guys are doing that repair and replace type mentality, you're like, okay, is this something we just repair or do we upgrade it to to meet needs longer in the future? Which which is the better option at this point? And that's the kind of stuff you're weighing.
And when you're replacing sometime, you're not replacing with the same product, you know, oftentimes. And not only that, you you choose, well, now before they didn't use the system of a pump right here or, you know, to for pressure and different things. Yeah. So you have to, there's, you might as well just be saying, infrastructure has never been here before. Really? Infrastructure has never been here before. How do we, how do we?
We gotta start over basically.
But you know, the city is blessed with very, very apt, very good employees who know what they're doing.
Our engineering staff and all them are very, very good at what they do.
We're we're very blessed here in Roswell. And I don't think a lot of people really understand that. But I remember one time I went out not long ago and I toured the wastewater treatment plant. I'd never been out and you know, I thought, well, you know, that's really the last thing that I've I might as well go see where it all goes.
See where it ends up.
And I spent probably, I don't know, three hours out there. So I was blown away. But I couldn't sleep for about three nights because I all it takes is just one thing to go wrong and it's backing up, you know.
It's it's a dance and and one out of step move and it gums up the works.
And I have a newfound respect for those guys out there because I mean, it is a science. It's amazing what they do out there and and it's just amazing. But we've been blessed. But anyway, the last night's meeting went just fine. We spent a good bit of money on roads and on construction, different things. We're going to be working on, like I said, from McGaffey all the way up to to college up here, going to be doing some Nova chip and that will be taking a small portion off of the top and then putting a new layer down. Right now you see them working out there. They're filling cracks. I called.
So is this um, is this like a same level as a chip seal or is this a deeper level than a chip seal or?
I am not an engineer. You're, yeah. Ask me some, ask me something about the book of Hezekiah in the Bible and you and I got a really great conversation.
I just didn't know because I knew there's different, you know, based on needs and repairs. I know chip seal versus, I didn't know if they were the same or ones a little different.
Right now they're going across Main Street and they're they're sealing the cracks. They're filling the cracks. And I thought, why are they filling the cracks? They're about to cut all that open. Well, because the cracks are more than an inch deep. So they're they're pouring that in so that when they do come to cut that that inch, two inches, whatever that is, I believe it's an inch off of the top of the surface. They're not going to tear up what's underneath.
Gotcha.
And then and they're actually finding some of the asphalt that has failed and they're cutting it out completely.
It's almost like surgical more than construction.
Oh, yeah. They're picking where those where those places that need to be removed and repaired and.
And imagine at the end of the day, because of technology and stuff, they can do this a lot more efficiently and cheaper. Whereas twenty years ago, they probably would have tore the whole thing up and started over again. Now they can be a little more surgical with it.
Technology has just come a long way. It really has. It's amazing. So so we went through that. So it's exciting. Counselor Robuck brought to us an idea and I was trying to look for it here on my agenda, but there's too much that we went through last night. I know what it is. We had the state of New Mexico. There was, I can't share a lot of information because of disclosure and different things, but the state of New Mexico had accidentally or for whatever reason, forgot to give us some some taxes.
Oops.
Some time ago and that's.
We just found these on the couch and we're like, oh, we're supposed to give these out.
And I'm not trying to imply that that everything's crooked and wicked and, you know, and that we're not getting I don't, but it is weird in New Mexico. We don't have the ability of knowing really every month we get our check.
Sure.
We get our check from 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 the state says, here's your gross receipts taxes.
And you have no idea how they calculate those numbers. They just say, here's what it is.
Ability to find out. And so I think there was enough suspicion from a few cities and they looked into it and they were able to prove, hey, we know that we were over. So once they looked at all of that, there there was a within the settling, there was not quite one point seven five million or so. Counselor Robuck said, hey, that's money we were not expecting. That was money. He says, we are, the voters want roads. I want roads. Let's quit tearing everyone's cars up. Let's let's put it in the road. So we added already, we've put over twelve million into roads. Let's put another one point seven eight.
So that's gonna allow a little bit more to get done.
Get more done. So working through all of that and.
Hopefully, maybe they'll find some more money a little later on or we can get check under the armchair or something.
Exactly. There were two addendums last night and I'll share with you on those. One of them is finally the Enchanted Hills will finally be completely completed. I don't know when that project was started. I'm going to assume the early seventies. I don't know, but.
You mean it's not done yet?
Well, you know, you keep expanding with your land.
Sure.
But a gentleman had two lots that were able to cut into ten lots.
Okay.
So now he's going to be able to provide for housing.
A little bit more housing in that area.
That worked very well. And then the 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 last one for the night that really brought the I won't say the fireworks because I think the council did very well. There was, there were a few of those moments where you thought, okay, the wheels are about to come off.
Gotcha.
But but counselors took a deep breath and remembered each of us have our own opinion. Each of us have our own way, our philosophy thinking about it and and tried to bring that respect back to the table.
Good.
And so I'm proud that the council did that. But what that is is funding seventy-five thousand dollars for what they're calling the Rocket Public Art.
Yes.
And that's it.
We talked about this yesterday.
And that's the old slide from Peppermint Park. And there's a local artist by the name of Josh Berry. I don't know Josh, but he was there last night and he he did a great job explaining what he had to offer. We had a prototype or whatever you want to say to look at.
Yeah.
And it looks sort of to me and I, you're you're going to know the word and I'm not going to know what it is, but like when I've been to some of the Cosmacons and stuff, these people who dress up and they've got the gears on their hats and stuff.
The steampunk.
What is it called?
That's called steampunk.
And I'll crush you on that.
Do you remember a movie in the, it was the nineties, early two thousands called Wild Wild West with Will Smith? And it was took place in the eighteen hundreds and Kevin Kline plays Ulysses S. Grant and there's a but anyway, there's a, it's a futuristic old west scene where basically set in the old west, but they have like these robots that are running in gears and steam and it kind of, it's, think of Jules Verne. Jules Verne, you know, that that style.
Who is Jules Verne?
Okay, I didn't know if you knew, I didn't know if you knew like the those type of.
Well, when I just remember seeing some folks out there with those gears and different things. And it reminded me, it just looks like something that maybe would fit with some of that. I I you you would be really bored around me. My wife, I drive her crazy because when when movie night for me is pulling up something from the nineteen thirties, the nineteen forties.
Okay.
I'm a really boring person. I really am.
You're wrong. You like what you like and that's that's and I get that. But but yeah, it's kind of like make, it's like it like if if we had modern technology things in the eighteen hundreds.
That's what it would be.
That would be kind of like.
That's sort of what this rocket's gonna look like.
Okay.
It's not going to be that squared off, just that very basic. It's going to have the colors seem, you know, they're just a little bit different.
It gives an artistic flair to it.
It's an artistic flair. And he did, I have to say this for him, kudos. He made a great design. The concern last night that came up was and 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 I have to recognize that, you know, each counselor doesn't, we don't all have the same information, you know, and I don't mean that we don't get the same information, see, but you know, one may have a better relationship with this person or with with someone in the community or something. So we gather our information differently.
Your relationships are different, so you get different information.
And which makes us have different perspectives on how things are coming about. So with the Rocket Art, I think there were some that were scratching their heads, wondering why, why is this coming to us right before we're about to change the ground? Because this has been around for several years, trying to figure out what we were going to do with this thing. And I think there were some that were just ready, gung ho, you know what? We're tired. It's been a long time. This thing is sitting out in the field. It's rusting away.
Yeah.
We need, if we're going to save this thing, we gotta do it. And then there were others that say, you know, we still don't have a complete picture because in all, we did vote to have for this rocket to be built, but we still don't know where it's going to be.
I'm just curious if it was the if if the people that were more for it, more pro wanting to get it done now were the folks that maybe lived, born, raised and grew up here and the people that maybe are new to this area or didn't or or maybe didn't grow up here as children, aren't as as exciting about needing to get this done now. Is that, I'm just curious because I think there's a lot of sentimental in this.
As I'm looking, I'm trying to look through the the votes as as how they went last night. And I think there may be some of that. I don't know for sure. For me, let me tell you how I voted. So so everybody understands for me, I I I said, hey, I recognize that things like this do bring people, it makes them stop. I told the story that just the other day I had to drive, I was in Lubbock and I had to go to Melrose, New Mexico for a ballgame. My my daughter was playing in state quarterfinals for Gateway. And I went through Mule Shoo, Texas, never been to Mule Shoo, Texas in my life. But I went through Mule Shoo and I saw these cars pulled over on the side of the road and and they were taking pictures and I thought, what could there be to take pictures of in Mule Shoo, Texas? And there's this, there's this mule, a statue of a mule sitting on top of this platform. And people out there taking their picture with this meal and I couldn't help but just laugh. I thought, my goodness. Out of anything, stop and take a picture. You're gonna take a picture with this meal. Well, I get it. I may not stop and take pictures with that mule. I may not stop and take a picture with that rocket. But every day I see people with this alien at Baskin Robbins or I see people out, I I travel to Artesia Bank forth a lot. So our welcome sign, I see people out there all the time and those are going across the world on social media.
Yeah.
I get that. My my thing was, we don't know where we're going to put it yet. And that does determine part of your cost. Is there concrete there? Are we gonna have to tear out concrete in order to put a better base in? How are we going to get the electricity there for it? Because it's going to have the, you know, the neon type.
Gotcha.
Lights and stuff and and how we, you know, and those answers weren't available because we just haven't decided yet. And I just said last night, I said, you know, if I talked to a contractor and he said, I could build you a beautiful five hundred thousand dollar house. It would be beautiful. And I'd say, wonderful. Where are we going to put it? And he says, well, I really don't know. We'll we'll figure that out later. You know, well, no, we don't figure it out later.
Because it may cost more than five hundred thousand dollars depending on where you put this.
Or I may not want that house where you're going to put it.
Sure.
That that, so I I had to pull back and refrain some. I did make a motion to try to send this to to a committee to make those decisions, to bring it all back. But in the end, the council was very, I think everybody was pretty set in place, whether you were for or against.
They weren't ready to move on.
I don't think I heard one person say, I hate this art. Throw that piece, go send it to scrap metal. Let's make some money off it. I don't think I heard one person say that.
Sure.
But I did hear some say, you know, I, we just don't have all the information you need.
And I get that, you know, it's like, we all want, we all want this thing or we want something that that Roswell's proud of. Sure, but maybe we should do the research and put it in a in a place where it's it gets the most bang for our buck versus just sticking it someplace that may or may not be beneficial to the community.
Exactly. And so it worked out well at the end of, after everything was done, we we did have one of the incoming counselors, Mr. Corn, who spoke against the project. And, you know, just talked about several things concerning it. But once everything was done and we voted, the council voted in favor. I think there were, I think there were three of us. I think there were three that voted against. And I don't think any of the three of us were anti putting up a rocket. It was, you know, we don't have all the information. This is a lot of money to put into something that that I don't.
You're not against the project, you're against haphazardly doing this project.
And I can't say we're haphazard necessarily, but in my mind, my, the way I think, I I need to have the information.
You want, yeah, it's still missing some parts and you want, like, like what you're promising, you really can't promise because there's variables in this equation that are missing. And I'm, and you've been around long enough to know that. And 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 so what what you're afraid is going to happen is they're going to be like, okay, we got our spot, but it's not going to cost seven hundred thousand. And you're like, whoa.
So we talked about all all of that and we got all that done. And then we talked about future agenda items and I did bring one thing up that I'm going to be bringing to the table hopefully soon. A number of years ago, I proposed the sexually oriented business ordinance. And what it did is just, it doesn't you can't legally say you can't have gentlemen's clubs. They say that's that's a freedom of speech and all this other thing to be able to have that. But you can regulate by zoning to to ensure that if if they are coming, they're going to be here. You know, they're going to be in this place of town. They're not going to be right on Main Street or right next to the First Baptist Church or whatever.
Right.
Or next to Washington Elementary School.
You don't want families, you know, living their lives and having to hang out next to one of these places.
We were very, very successful with that and we've been blessed with with things going well with that. Now, and and I I don't, I'm not trying to be the conscious, the conscience of the of the council. But human trafficking is a real thing and we're starting to learn that within these law, and I'm not saying all, but I'm saying within the world of massage parlors, there is a significant amount, as I'm learning of human trafficking of.
It's a weak spot in that in that system.
Weak spot. So I think the part of our job as counselors is to protect, you know, the, you know, through health, safety and welfare. So I have found a county in Pennsylvania that has been successful with regulating massage parlors. And so I'm taking some of that. We're looking at state statute now. We're looking at what are our limits within state statute? What are our limits within the constitution, these things? But at the same time, be able to adequately, and some of those things may be like time, place and manner. Do, you know, if my shoulders are hurting, do I really get up at three o'clock in the morning to do a massage? And we're gonna leave it right there.
Yeah, I get what you're saying.
So maybe they, you know, they need to close at six o'clock.
I'm sure there's not an emergency massage situation at O two hundred, you know.
Exactly. So, you know, but but we're going to try, I shouldn't say we, I at this point am trying. And I'm hoping that with the new council that I'll be able to persuade and show them that we need to, that there's more than swimming pools and there's more than, you know, cutting the grass at City Hall and there's more than that, that, there's policy.
Well, and it's kind of like, you know, getting back to this cannabis ordinance that, you know, or, you know, now that we're I guess here in April, it's coming up. It's going to be recreational here and 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 this is something the city council, all city councils and county commissions and municipalities across the state are really dealing with right now. And 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 some of this falls in that same vein here and and so.
You have to get creative. You have to. And yeah, you have to get creative and Roswell has been creative even with it. We're not saying you can't have that stuff in town, but but we've been creative in how we deal with it.
Sure.
In order to try to protect the citizens as best we can. So we went through that last night and then at the very end of the meeting, we gave the accolades of the counselors that are going to be leaving and and our kudos and our thanks and appreciation.
Did they have them say like, good luck, suckers?
Counselor Lopez, when he finished, he said, you know, he said, I'm gonna be short because I'm hungry. And he get, and he talked and he, I was, it was good to hear his perspective, not been on the council that long, but I'm gonna tell you, someone who was willing to step up to the plate. And when he was finished, he said, and he says, so that's all I have to say. So over and out, you know, and pushed his microphone off. And then I think the counselor Kenner spoke as well and it was touching and moving to hear what she had to say. And she gave some good, kind words about Judge Loy who had who'd passed away and so we talked about that and then as I'm trying to go through the list and then Counselor Robuck and we talked a little bit and he he has some very kind words to say and and then I think the the focal almost became from all of the counselors on on Counselor Stubbs.
Yeah.
She's given twenty years.
She spent a lot of time in those chairs, yeah.
And and you know, we've got, we've got a gentleman coming in that I believe is apt. I believe he's going to be ready on day one to really get in there and work.
Sure.
And and we welcome him. We're we're ready to welcome.
The other day, his goals are the same. He wants the best for this.
He wants the best.
This is city, just like Judy does.
Absolutely. But boy, when you've had someone like Judy for so long, you're like, how, how are we going to do this? You know?
You missed that experience in the room.
You missed that experience in the room. But a lot, many people said, and I agree, I don't think we were, I don't think any of these counselors are gone. Counselor Robuck has a lot of passion for this city.
All of those city counselors love this city and will continue to fight for it.
Counselor Lopez, he has done so much already before he's a councilman. I look forward to seeing what he's going to do later and and Counselor Kenner is just so involved in so much in the community. And then Counselor Stubbs, I know that we're going to be able to pick up that phone and say, we've got an ordinance. We need someone to look at. Could you help me?
She can, she can be the adult in the room sometimes when you need it.
So but it was, it was a good time. And but I want to say, last but not least with all of that is it was a time to recognize. it was a time to recognize, uh, um, Mayor.
Mayor Dennis Kentine, his service to our community. Yep.
You know, uh, the, this, this, this was a rough campaign to watch. It, it was, it was rough to watch. It really was. Um, and, but at, when everything is said and done, I just want everyone to know that, uh, that Mayor Kentai has made some significant contributions to this country, that, to this city. This city is a better place because of many of the things. The dilapidated structures that are gone, we'll never know. The number of lives that were saved because of drugs that weren't able to be taken in these haunts or, or rapes that were taken in these dilapidate, these, these are the kind of things that happen in dilapidated structures. We don't know what times of life. We just don't know.
Sure.
And, 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 and I get it. Uh, maybe this is the pastor in me or something. I get it. The easier thing is to beat up on the things we disagree on. But, you know, every once in a while, take a little deep breath. It's all over now. We have a, a new mayor coming in. We have new counselors coming in. But I wanna tell the folks, uh, whether you voted for these folks or you didn't vote for these folks, when you see them in public, would you at least take a deep breath and look them in the eye and say, thank you?
Yeah, absolutely.
Say thank you. You know, we.
I tried to make a point of that. Every candidate I interview, when I came in here, I tried to make a point and say, you know, win, lose or draw. At the end of the day, you're doing this because you care about our community. And, and, and I, you know, thank you very much. I tried to do that with every one of them.
My grandfather, uh, was, uh, was in the Navy and he told me, says, if you think that every single person who signed up to be in the Navy or, or serve our country, uh, did everything right and that, man, our country is a hundred percent better because of everything they did. He said, you're crazy. He said, we almost died because of some knuckleheads doing crazy stuff on boats and stuff.
Yeah.
He said, but you still stop and you thank them. He says, because their willingness, he says, and it's a group effort. It's, it's not an I, it's a we. And, uh, so please take the time, uh, my life is better. It is. I have to say, my life is better and I have a different perspective on things in life from serving, uh, for eight years with Mayor Kentai.
Sure.
And, uh, and I will always be appreciative. Uh, he gave me the opportunity to serve in many capacities that, um, as chair of finance, uh, and, uh, different things.
Well, he saw where people's expertise was and, and he saw where yours was and he put you where he thought you could serve best this community.
Yeah. Now we had our, uh, we had our wrestling matches. Boy, did we ever.
But that's nothing wrong with that. You know what I mean? Because if it all comes from a good place, then it's a good thing, I think.
And, uh, and we have a new council coming on and, uh, everybody's maybe scared of the what ifs, the what ifs, you know?
Fear is the biggest, uh, or unknown is the biggest fear.
Like I said last night, Romans 13, one, God really is the one who, who determines these things. He's the one who's chosen and those authorities owe for us. And, uh, so we trust God and we move on. Overall, last night was a very good evening. And, um, we look forward to what we have in the future.
Absolutely. And, uh, and I do wanna mirror what, 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 what Jason Perry's saying here. Thank you to each of those folks that, uh, called last night their last city council meeting here. We, we do appreciate, uh, mayor and these city counselors for their service. Uh, and, and like you said, their continued service. I, I had to, to each person, they're not done, uh, being involved with our, with our community and doing things to help make it better, whether it's in an official elected capacity or just John Q. Public or Jane Q. Public, they're gonna keep doing that.
That's right.
So, uh, thank you to them. And, and, and I wish nothing but, uh, good success and tidings for our new folks that come in. I hope you get in here and, and, and we can really, uh, get some good work done and continue to make this city a, uh, you know, a great city.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Absolutely. Well, thank you, sir.
Keep going.
We'll keep going and, uh, anytime, we, you know, uh, I don't know if you're gonna continue as Pro Tim or what's gonna happen there, but, uh.
I just, I just hope they let me keep coming to the meetings, you know?
I think they'll have a spot for you, you know? And I bet if you ask nice and say, hey, you know, give me a, give me a sandwich or some, you know? I think you can work that, you know, just leave me a, leave me a little something right here for me. Get, especially when it's these four hour job meetings. We need, we need a little, little energy to keep going. But, uh, but thank you very much for your service too. And, and I'm sure we'll have you on the radio here much more. Between now and then, and anytime, uh, we, we'd love to have you.
All right. You, you wanna go build a snowman?
Well, we, we might have enough now. I'm seeing enough on the building. We might at least a, maybe a, a two foot snowman, but we got one out there.
Stay warm. We'll see you later.
Take care. It is 7:55. Let's go ahead.